Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Jack Pryor and I am the Chair of the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District. This is the meeting of that district to consider the items that are on the agenda. I believe the language is that the legal voters of Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District are hereby notified to assemble at the Grathton Elementary School in Grathton, Vermont, to meet and act on the articles, I'm not going to read them all, approved by the school board of the W N U E S D. A couple of ground rules. Because we'll be electing a clerk tonight, we'll just, and I don't know if the clerk knows everybody, whoever that person may be, I would ask people when they rise to speak that they identify both who they are, if they think that spelling is important, do that for them, please, and the town they're from. Because there are a couple items here that are Athens, Grathton only items. Namely, the election of votes for the two positions that may or may not be available for votes tonight. So with that said, I would like, before we formally begin, to observe an obscenity that happened at a school district in Texas, a school in Texas tonight. Fourteen young people were killed for no earthly reason, while one teacher was also murdered by this person. This happens in schools, in public assemblies, at trains. It happens for no earthly reason, and I don't know what to say, but I would like us to observe a moment of silence. I would like, with your permission, to begin with Article One. The election of a moderator to serve for a one-year term or until the next annual meeting of this district. And I would like to personally nominate the person who has managed as moderator for our high school for several years now, John Capincelli. But obviously, I invite other people, if they have nominations to make, to do so. I'm hearing no other nominations. Thank you for that. It's not meeting for small boards, and I've been doing small boards for a while. If there are no other nominations, I would hear a motion from the four, the second, to authorize the Chair of the School Board to cast one ballot for Don Capincelli. And I need a second if I could. I've got that second. All in favor of the Chair casting one, vote for Don Capincelli on behalf of the district, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Don, the four is yours, and we'll, we're going to get it. Yeah, I'm going to do this. Here's the Chair.
Again, we just asked that, when nominating or speaking to an article that you, I, you give us a name and the town that you're from. Okay, Article Two is to elect a treasurer to serve a one-year term or until the next annual meeting of the district. Do we have any nominations? Treasurer?
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to nominate Rod Lawrence for the position of treasurer, who will serve one year until the next annual meeting. Rod has served as at interim, as at Windham Treasurer for the last while, and he is a Grathton resident, so he can continue as treasurer after Westminster.
Jack Pryor nominates Rod Lawrence. Maybe we have a second?
A second.
First, they gave seconds. Any of the nominations for treasurer? As the noise like to move the nomination seats and the moderator cast one ballot for Rod Lawrence. I'll need a second. I'll need a second on that.
I don't know who most of these people are. Sorry. Please say I have a second. Thank you.
Harold Noyes.
N O Y E S. Moving seconded, that the nomination cease and that the moderator cast one ballot for Rod Lawrence for treasurer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Article Three is to elect a clerk to serve a one-year term or until the next annual meeting of this district. Do we have any nominations?
Kim Record, you were going to make a nomination, I understood.
I'll nominate Kim Record.
That's a surprise. I thought it was going to be the other way around.
Kim Record is nominated. Are there any of the nominations for clerk for a one-year term?
Make a motion, I'd like to see.
Harold Noyes moves that the nomination cease and that the moderator cast one ballot for Kim Record as clerk. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Have we got a second?
I did.
All right, Article Four. Shall the voters of the W N U E S D modify the Articles of Agreement to remove all references to the town of Westminster as of July 1st, 2022, in compliance with the State Board of Education's rule allowing the formation of the Westminster School District and empowering the elected board of that district to assume full operational authority of the schools and properties located in that town?
Second.
Denise Randall of Athens makes that motion.
Suzanne Welch.
Suzanne Welch, seconds. Is there discussion on Article Four?
Is anyone wondering what this is about, or needing any explanation of what this is erupting to, or we got? Has everybody satisfied?
This was kind of the final step. I guess there were a bunch of steps. No further discussion. Are we ready for the question? Shall the voters of the W N U E S D modify the Articles of Agreement to remove all references to the town of Westminster as of July 1st, 2022, allowing the formation of the Westminster School District and empowering the elected board of that district to resume full operational authority of the schools and properties located in that town? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It appears that the ayes have it, the ayes do have it, and Article Four passes. Article Five. Shall the voters of the W N U E S D approve the disposition of its current fund balance as of July 1st, 2021, as identified by the auditor of the district, to be $1,412,876 according to the formula recommended by the W N U E S D and Westminster boards? The formula is a grant of $1,62,546 to the school district of Westminster and $350,330 to be retained by the W N U E S D for the purposes of tuition reimbursement, future reductions to the tax rate beginning in 2024, and physical improvements to the Grathton Elementary School. We have a, we have a motion on Article Five. Denise Randall from Athens makes the, makes the motion. So, maybe we have a second? Okay, is there discussion on this article?
Anyone want to know how we came up with the numbers?
I think you should explain it.
Thank you. I thought so too. I hold in my hands, almost a year late, the report of the final audit report, not approved quite yet by the board, but we actually have a printed copy of the audit's report. As people have known, it's been sort of an exciting process to find out just what our state of our finances are. And while we often have surpluses, this one is larger than most. And so the question became one of how to arrange the split of those monies. And there were a couple of suggestions made. Hardy Merrill led the determinations of this, and Hardy, you want to just?
I'd like that, yes.
Other than my trying to paraphrase here.
Okay, so the total number again is $1,412,876 as of the '21 audit. Now, the last audit for form before this was in 2019, when the districts were actually separate. At that time, Athens, Grathton joint contract had an audit of $56,492 surplus and an audit in Westminster of $342,97. So that was a total of $399,462. Now, this would have carried forward into the combined units, the two districts, for. So that's a give, that's a plus. Then what I did was there was not an audit for '20 or '21. So what I did was I looked up the reports of what each town submitted in tax money to fund the schools. And for those two years, Grathton and Athens financed $3,912,024, and Westminster, $9,580,103. So that is a percentage split of 28.99% for the W N U E S D and 71.01% for the other school, Westminster. So when you split, if you keep, take the 399 out, you're left with $1,013,414 to be split between Westminster and Grathton and Athens. With a split by the 29.99% and the 71.01%, the total becomes 293,838 plus the $56,492 for Grathton equals 350,330, and 719,576 plus 342,974 for Westminster, which is a total of $106,254. So that was how it was done. The Westminster board agreed to that, the Grathton and Athens board agreed to that. And so that's how the number was calculated.
Questions?
Yes, one, ask me two questions. Does this cover the current school year?
It does not cover the current school year. So there's probably going to be an additional surplus. Anyhow, both towns utilized the big budget going forward because they didn't know what the actual worth because the financial department was such a disarray for them.
And the second question is, once the district was split, if this body no longer exists, how will we portion, what body will portion the current year surplus that we have?
I can answer that. The state? The question is, the number here focuses on the surplus as of July 1st of last year. So we have a school year that we're running now, and we're anticipating some sort of surplus, whether it's large or not, I'm not sure. But whatever it is, how does that get, how does that get split up? And the answer is that in that particular case, the Westminster, the newly created as of July 1, Westminster School District Board and the Board of the W N U E S D have to agree to a split submitted to their respective voters, assuming that they do, that everybody agrees to it, and then submit that agreement to the state. And that closes the books as far as our friends at the State Board of Education are concerned. So we, I'm anticipating we'll do that on Town Meeting Day, but that depends on whether or not the auditors are a little more prompt, and they were this year since we just got the report that was due in March this week. So there you go. Yes?
Do you think new auditors, or what?
Funny discussion. We have not had that discussion yet, but I promise you we will.
But we have discussed that.
Yeah, I took, I, I am not in fundamental disagreement with the point. But that's, that is a SUI decision, and we will have that discussion once all the individual boards have got their, have got their reports, have approved their reports, and it will be on an agenda soon.
So what is the scheduling for audits? Is it done on a yearly basis?
It is done on a yearly basis. It is, the books are closed on June 30th. Oftentimes, there's some back and forth. The expectation is that most of everything should be finished up in September. We, then, once that's done, the numbers essentially are submitted to the auditors, who do their work, and we normally anticipate an auditor's report in January, early February if things go badly. And that's normally part of the, that's normally part of your town or your district report because we normally have, we normally have as part of the warning, a question to voters as to how to dispense the surplus. And we have to know what that surplus is 40 days before the meeting. So that gives you the timeline, we can look it backwards.
And I have a second question. What is the recommendation of voters, strictly, with us the same way that 29 and 70 were that under route for that?
I can't speak for the board because I'm just a member. But I would anticipate it would, it might look and smell very much like that. But again, maybe there's been changes to the, changes to the amounts people have contributed this year because maybe they've built a whole bunch of new buildings in one town or another. That's, that, I think, I'm, would you assume that would be your recommendation?
Yes, and I also already have those figures available. They've been provided to me, but I've not further.
What he said.
And I just haven't put them together yet, but I don't think we need to until it's all acommoded.
So, so there's your answer, short and sweet, or maybe not so short. Are there any other questions? I see one. Yes, to that.
Did I understand from the reading of the article that the surplus may be applied to our taxes in this year 24?
I'm going to go read what I wrote, since I wrote this thing. The, the point is that we were vague about it because we didn't, A, we didn't know how people would want to deal with tuition reimbursements or tax reductions. Those are the two options we have. And the reason why it was written that way is because there was some real open question as to what are, what are number of tuition students we're going to be at the time that this article is written. So we want to, we certainly want to make certain we don't want a deficit in that account. And we will, we will have discussion about disbursement within this, within that parameter, but I didn't have the numbers at the time, didn't have the, and we thought this was best. Plus, the folks in, this is an agreement between us and the soon-to-be Westminster School Board, and they have their own agenda in terms of how they're going to disperse money. So we use this language to cover, cover, I hope that, you could change it on the floor if you prefer, but this is what we're recommending.
And just to be clear, this article will then appear on this coming town meeting?
An article for the clarifying our recommendation will come at that time. Next year, it will be for the surplus, assuming there is one, for this coming, for that, for the year ending July or June 30th. And usually, as I say, usually we have a very specific goal, often it's to cover tuition excesses, but it's also a way, it's the only legally, legal way you can carry forward a surplus in the state of Vermont, is you have to earmark it. So otherwise, you have to give it back to the state. And if there's anyone who would like to do that, let me know.
I think, I just want to clarify, this is the final decision. We're not recommending something that has to be ratified another time for the decisions.
We are, this, yeah, this clears the books for that fiscal year and all years prior. So as I said, there will be something as of June 30th, but I don't know what that is yet. We'll argue with that in March. Any further questions?
More discussion? Questions?
You have to ask that. I'm sorry.
I don't hear any. Are we ready for the question? It has been moved and seconded that the voters of the W N U E S D do approve the disposition of its current fund balance as of July 1st, 2021, identified by the auditor of the district to be $1,412,876 according to the formula recommended by the W N U E S D and Westminster boards. The formula is a grant of $1,62,546 to the school district of Westminster and $350,330 to be retained by W N U E S D for the purposes of tuition reimbursement, future reductions to the tax rate beginning in 2024, and fiscal and physical improvements to the Grathton Elementary School. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes appear to have it, and the ayes do have it, and so Article Five passes. Now, as I understand, Article Six and Seven, with Westminster going off on their own. The W N E S D, which is Athens and Grathton, will have four board members. Article Six is to see if the voters want to increase the board to six members from four. Article Seven would be, if, if, if the answer to that is yes, Article Seven would be, should we elect the people from the floor tonight, or, or else? Article Six. Shall the voters of Athens and Grathton, being voters of the W N U E S D after July 1st, 2022, modify the Articles of Agreement to add two additional district school board members, elected by the district as a whole, with the provision that one new member shall reside in the town of Athens and the other new member shall reside in the town of Grathton. These members shall serve one term beginning July 1st, 2022, until the next annual meeting. I think the intent of that last line was that this first term will expire at the next annual meeting. We need a motion on the. Denise Randall, Athens, moves that we, that we, that we increase the board. Is there a second?
One second.
Sorry, I should know your name.
Yeah, Goodwin, Grathton.
Is there discussion on, discussion on Article Six?
For example, does anybody want to know what this means?
And my question is, the one-year term, the main one-year term, so how are we nominating?
Well, the wording of the article is not clear. I don't know if somebody wanted to offer an amendment that, something to the effect of terms will renew at the next annual meeting, something like that.
To answer the question, the board had not worked out who gets the one year and who gets the two for the, for that first, to start things off. And we'll have to draw straws and get that worked out, but we didn't, and we ran out of time to figure it out. So this was what we've done for now. But yes, the, in our, in our six district, three-town process, it was fairly easy. You just picked one from each town. Now, now that there are, say, six across two, obviously, we're going, somebody is going to have a one-year term and then start them with a two-year term so it gets staggered. We just haven't, just didn't figure out who was and who it was. Does anyone have a question about why we think that the board needs to be expanded? I know this was a subject, a select board in, in Athens. So we, everybody understand the rationale for doing this? Want to know why we're doing this?
Sure.
It really just came down to the fact that we spend about two-thirds of your taxes. And two people spending two-thirds, you know, from each town spending two-thirds of taxes seemed like maybe not enough people. And this was a way to, to both encourage people to run and to have a broader array of viewpoints. Short and sweet.
Any other discussion on the article?
Well, I just have one question. When you say annual meeting, you're talking actually about town meetings, or?
Well, good question, complicated answer. The, we, because you're no longer individual town districts, there will be, there will still be this thing called the W N U E S D, until we come up with a better name, and hopefully do those. The, I don't know if people think they really like it. The, the way this would work would be that we will have either a district meeting roughly in March, or we will just add these items as, as Australian ballot items. And the folks in Westminster, half the reason, half their alleged reason for wanting to separate was that they want to be able to have these items discussed on the floor. And we have, we're more complicated, and I'm trying to see how we're going to get that worked out. Yes?
So, I know in the past, when we were in the joint district, it was an advocate of vote counts. Besides how voting, like, if you vote on, what did that, did it end?
The, all the votes would be annulled, much the way they are for the, for the high school. And all the, well, everybody would vote, and we'd pile them all together. And what we, we tried to pitch to the, to the states, elections folks, whether or not we could do a, we could hold town meetings for both towns at the same time and just have a common video and try to do it that way. Did not like that idea. But we'll see what we can persuade them to do when the, this is coming call. Yes?
What is this vote? Would you prefer the residents to extend?
They have the right to vote, but I would rather hope they didn't, but that's simply up to them. So that's how we'll plan that.
Are we ready? Is there more discussion on this article? Athens and Grathton going from four members to six, three from each town, elected at large. Okay, so moving seconded, that the voters of Athens and Grathton, being voters of the W N U E S D after July 1st, do modify the Articles of Agreement to add two additional school board members, elected by the district as a whole, with the provision that one new member shall reside in the town of Athens and the other new member shall reside in the town of Grathton. These members shall serve one term beginning July 1st, 2022, until the next annual meeting. All those in favor of Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article passes. The ayes have, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article passes. So now is the question, do we vote these people in tonight? Article 7, shall the voters of Athens and Grafton, being voters of the WNUESD after July 1st, 2022, elect one additional member from the town of Athens and one additional member from the town of Grafton to serve beginning July 1st, 2022, until the annual meeting in the district in performance of Article 6 of vote?
Mr. Moderator, this is the one that's always the most complicated one. Because what we're really trying to do is ask Athens and Grafton voters, A, now that they've authorized two additional members, whether they want to have those members start now and who they'd like them to be. This would be a vote of Athens and Grafton residents exclusively. The question we had coming into this was whether or not those of you who have assembled want to elect those folks tonight, or whether you would rather pass it over. If you pass it over, then the, this board would end up soliciting potential candidates, and they would vote on it. But here you are, and you certainly have that right to pick folks. Yes?
Would it be this board that we have a, so is it tonight or is it the town select board?
Because the school board does it because you don't, because these are not town boards. This is a, this is a district board.
The school board and the select board for each town are two completely separate government bodies. They don't have any influence or right to control the other.
So we, oddly enough, we can't pick members of your select board either. I understand that's been an item of interest and has some tie votes, so we can't help you with that. So that's how that one works. Yeah.
They're two separate government bodies, they're like separate states.
So, so the question is, you know, and if there are no nominees, then we'll simply go on and do it the other way. But if there are people that would like to nominate members, yes?
One more question. Do, is it all about, like, do voters have to be voted in tonight? Or if one town votes for it tonight, it's one town?
Well, we were still, we're still using that fund system that the state imposed on us where we have reserved seats. But the, in other words, there is a seat reserved for the town of Athens, there is a seat reserved for the town of Grafton, but all of Athens and Grafton get to vote on those people. You know, this is how we make, this is the closest way we can reproduce the old joint contract system. And frankly, y'all ought to get to know each other anyway, so it works out.
Ken, are you proposing a two-step system, a two-step process where we first agree whether we're going to elect people tonight, and then if we do, entertain nomination?
Well, we have already agreed that we could do that by the prior item. So we've now given you, so we're giving you that option. People, if there are no nominations, I'm kind of hoping there will be some, then I would, then we would recommend passing it over is how I would view it.
I can nominate someone.
Well, Mr. Brier, yeah, I'm just want to, as a moderator, I just want to be sure that I'm clear on the intent of the article. I thought it was, you know, do we, do we elect people tonight or do we let the board choose appointments?
Well, if we elect them tonight, then, I mean, my assumption would be that we would vote to nominate people. If people think they're, that would rather pass it over because they just don't think, you know, that's what they want to do, they can do that. So I would entertain a motion either to nominate or to pass over from whoever, and that's how we would go.
What I understood is, yes, let's vote on it from the floor tonight, and so Article 7 passes, then we start into nominations. Or is that not what the intent of this article was?
The article was.
Mr. Chairman, has this been moved yet and seconded? Or are we still in a pre-debate stage or something?
Good question, Mr. Moderator. The point is we're taking it there, Mr. Stevens.
I don't know.
I think that you, the point that you're making is a good one because it sounds like very much we should, we should first clarify that we're taking nominations and then, and then move to, to put them on the floor. So I think that's a good point. I would encourage that interpretation, Mr. Moderator.
I think we take two nominations, one from Grafton and one from Athens. You'd like the two women to listen. Second option.
Okay, who had the second? I heard seven.
Kathy Ciano.
Kathy Ciano had the second. Okay, is there any discussion on, any further discussion on Article 7? There's the movement seconded that we do elect two members tonight, one from Athens and one from Grafton.
I would appreciate either someone from the board or someone in the audience explaining to me the need to do that tonight when I feel there may be other good candidates who aren't here and can't, and couldn't speak to the fact of whether they were nominated and whether they wanted that. I don't know, it seems to me to be a really small group of people to be doing it. I, but I, I just raised that. If anyone could explain to me why it would be a good idea to do this tonight, I would appreciate that.
Are we making a shot? The, the concern simply was that on July 1st, we'll be down to four folks. And I think there was, there was great merit in either way of dealing with this, which was, you know, I didn't know if 10 people were going to show up or if 150 people were going to show up. Hmm?
You mean 10?
10, right. And well, we have that answer. So, so it's a legitimate question, and I think that's the reason why you quite rightfully asked that it be brought up. I would like to get new people on the board as soon as, literally, as of the first meeting in July. If we don't do that, and we just are down to a four-person board because, you know, all it takes is one person to have a call and somebody else to have a flat tire, and we're screwed up.
The board would function better. Is that another way of saying that you did?
It is, that's the allegation. You can tell from how this is going, that maybe it's a good idea.
It would make you guys functional.
I, I think it would feel more comfortable, there'd be less, less concern about forums and all that good stuff.
That's all I wanted, thank you.
My apologies, I guess we should have a motion on Article 7.
Glad we did, we're all good there.
Oh boy, it's been a long day.
I think you've got that point, a couple of questions.
More discussion, more discussion. Ready for the question?
Whether we're going to do this, yeah.
I think it's the move and seconded that we do elect two members to the board tonight, one from Athens, one from Grafton, at large. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so.
Nominations being open.
Yeah. Should we start with Grafton? Do we have any nominations for the Grafton board chair?
Oh, not the board chair.
I'm an experienced moderator.
I'm going to query because I haven't asked her whether Kathy Ciano would be interested in being on the board, not to put you in a spot, Kathy, are you interested in this?
They can.
They can?
Yes. You know, you could, you could just say that you're a rational person and really rather not. That's perfectly acceptable.
Nominate Mary Beth Callard.
I just started working nights.
I'm going to move that we pass, we pass over the nomination of the member from the town of Grafton, and we'll do some soliciting. It sounds like we will do that.
Mr. Brier moves that we pass over the nomination of a Grafton representative tonight. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Why are we doing, I didn't quite understand.
We're having, we're having a, we're having a whack of willing candidates, unless of course, there is, you know, a glow from these physician occupied by Suzanne Welch, and she'd like to do it.
No, I, I, did both Kathy and Mary Beth say no?
Yeah, I just heard it.
Yeah. I vote that.
Oh, I don't know.
Well, then.
Being on a pool board is a lot of fun, and you actually get to make a really meaningful impact on a lot of kids. So if anybody is at all interested, I mean, I've only been here for a few months, but I can't think of any other positions where we've already not only decided budgets, but whether kids are allowed to come to this school, employment decisions. Like, there's not many other positions where you show up for a few hours or you can make significant impacts on the lives of children in our community. And I'd also like to say that over this next year, we're going to have some very significant decisions coming up about our school, what we're doing with it, the size. And it's not a lot of work, and you just need to care.
And if the meetings go along, we'll order pizza.
Mr. Brier moves that the nomination, Grafton closed, we pass over. Is there a second? Are we, are we ready for the question? It's the movement seconded that Grafton passed the, passed the opportunity to nominate somebody tonight. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, so Athens, do we have nominations for the, the school board?
I nominate Don Capitelli.
Oh, respectfully, the client, thank you.
I thought he was going to too.
David Nelson, how about Don Capitelli?
Well, there you go.
This is like trying to retire from work, everybody's in denial.
Mercy. Well, then I guess we're, do we have anyone else that would like to do it? Does a certain reverend from, from the town of Athens interested in signing up for another round of this?
I nominate Harold Noys.
Be Patty here in a second. You up for it, Harold?
It's only till July, Harold, I promise we won't work it, you know, work it, you know, the corner.
Anybody like the second, Harold Noys?
Second.
Ms. Stevenson? Do we have any other nominations for Athens?
I think the nominations should be closed and authorized the moderator to cast one vote, et cetera.
Okay, it's been, Jack Brier made the motion that the nomination ceased and that the moderator cast one ballot for Harold Noys as the school director. For a second, Denise Randall? All those favorite closing? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Harold Noys.
Congratulations, Harold.
Harold. We keep it coming, Harold.
Um, the Article 8, next.
Article 8, shall the voters of Athens and Grafton, being voters of the WNUESD after July 1st, 2022, authorize its board of directors to sign a long-term lease for the Grafton Elementary School and accompany lands for no less than 55 years with the town of Grafton so as to qualify for federal ESSR renovation grants. We have a motion.
I'll vote for you.
Harold Noys moves that we do, and Denise seconded by Denise Randall. So discussion on the article?
Yeah.
What are the terms of the lease and how people bid in for that?
Let me read you the amendment, the lease, as proposed, as passed by the, by the town of Grafton a couple of months ago. Lease amendment entered into April, as of April, or signing, 2022, by Grafton, municipality, et cetera, and Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. For good and valuable consideration, language that makes it print well, the lesser and lessy, that's us and the town, amend the lease entered into April 8, 2019, and the term would be deleted as written, and the new term would say, shall be for 55 years commencing April 8, 2019, and shall be automatically renewed from year to year unless an annual renewal is terminated in writing by both parties. In other words, the town can't, the town can't, can't terminate the lease early, the district can't terminate the lease early, both parties would have to agree, and both districts would have to vote for it. So that's how that works. The, yes?
I'm going to make an unpopular comment that some other people shared at their commencement as well, that this school was built by the town of Grafton or the children of Grafton. And Grafton would like to retain control of the building regardless of what becomes of the Wyndham or lease, I would improve, and sort of, be the future.
I, I, let me respond to that because this is a sensitive point. The town of Grafton built this building, and it incurred a debt to build it. That debt has been paid, and there's been many costs to repair the building, actually amounting to close to 40% of the original cost of this building. And who's been paying their share of that for more than, for decades has been the other community involved, which has been Athens. In fact, Athens has, on some years, paid more to the upkeep of this facility than the town of Grafton has because for years, you paid by the student. And there've been, there've been multiple years where there are more students from Athens than there were from Grafton. My personal view is that part of the reason that the town has retained the lease, or done this on a lease rather than a sale basis, was because they felt that those initial investments still need to be honored. But the reason why we're doing this on a 55-year lease basis is, one, there's over $1 million in Esser federal money that can be used to renovate this building. The heating system is certainly item number one. To renovate the grounds and to expand instructional opportunities for our children. Particularly, there's, there's some discussion about a preschool program, which we'll get into in detail as, as it gets a little bit more fully paid. All those things are dependent on this federal money. If we do not have, either if the building is not owned by the district or we don't have a long-term interest, 50 years plus, we can't give that money. And people that will pay the difference, the taxpayers of Athens and Grafton. I never want to do anything that costs Athens and Grafton a chance to pick up $1 million in federal funds. And I think for that reason, if there were no others, that this is essentially formalizing an understanding we had right along. If for some reason, five, 10 years from now, the voters in their wisdom decide to close the school, that's a bit, and, and tuition folks out, I would assume that as part of that decision, they would also ask the town to, to take back the lease, and I would assume that they would be willing to do so. But for now, with that kind of money at stake, this seems the rational way to go.
More questions, more discussion on Article 8?
Under the lease, the district didn't pay for all the grounds and for the upkeep?
Yeah, this is one of those cripple something or other, what do they call the things? Where, where, where we would, where we're responsible for the upkeep of the facility, upkeep of the grounds, and all, you know, day-to-day maintenance, like the eleoncets from down in the back of the building, we gotta go back.
Is that, is that in the lease, or?
That's, yeah, that's, that's in the lease.
It's the, it's the grounds and anything that's physically attached to the building. So it's, it's, it's not only the physical building itself, it's, it's the ground, anything that's affixed to it, like the shed, the playground, anything that's physically affixed to the property.
Yeah, so we, we, we own all the bills. Uh, half, half of downtown Boston is built on 99-year leases, uh, so it's the same kind of thing here.
More discussion on Article Eight? We're ready for the question. It's moved and seconded that the voters of Athens and Grafton, uh, being voters of the W N U E S D after July 1st, that do authorize the board of directors to sign a long-term lease for the Grafton Elementary School and accompanying lands for no less than 55 years with the town of Grafton so as to qualify for federal eser renovation grants. All in favor, all those in favor of the article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ask his amendment.
All right, well then, somebody can finally sign this piece of paper. It's been in my folder for a few months.
Article Nine, shall the voters of the W N U E S D act on or consider other matters to be brought before the voters assemble in this meeting?
There don't have to be any, but if, if anybody has questions about the school or, or any other items, guess it's he won.
What, uh, what do we do now that the nominations have been passed over, Grafton? Another shot at it tonight, or, I mean, there was a will of this body to try to relax the length of the elections tonight, and I'm not quite sure where we go from here.
The problem is, we don't have any nominees that are willing to serve. If, I, I would suggest if anyone-
For nominations again?
Well, two, two things can be done. One, somebody wants to put their hand up and say why they'd like to be considered, we could certainly do that tonight, or they could wait until we meet next at the, uh, at the next meeting of the, uh, school board and ask that school board to do it. Either one works for me, but right now I just, I have the embarrassing lack of, of nominees.
I'd like to nudge either Nancy, Cynthia, or Hardy. I mean, we have-
No, Hardy's already, Hardy, we already drafted Hardy. We, we got him, we can't skate.
Okay, so this apprately, I hope it doesn't, Nancy.
Date night at the school board, we use.
Yeah, um, you know, I'm, I'm, if, if, if there is somebody that'd be willing to stand to do this, I'd be thrilled. Is there anyone here that would not like to nominate themselves to, uh, be members? And there we have our dilemma.
All right, okay, I just wanted to give it one more try, um.
The board have a meeting scheduled for June?
Yep.
We have excellent potential candidates in this room right now.
Um, and, and there will be, there will be a letter in the Grafton News essentially begging you all to consider that, and we'll talk about that more in time.
Perhaps by the June meeting, come up with an appointment.
No, I, I, I did think we had nominees, but apparently my, my, uh, folks who I thought were going to do it changed their mind, and, uh, so we'll, we'll, we'll come to that. All right, um, I think this is where the moderator, uh-
Any further business? Does, we can't have anybody move to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Denise Randall, uh, seconded by Harold Noes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you all very much.